Village City Council early work session. Today is Tuesday, September the 14th, and it is 5:00 PM. We are going to get started with a presentation on, receive a presentation on potential future bond issuance. And please, Mr. Herman. I was like, hmm, who wants to do this?
Well, we've, Mayor, Council, we've talked through the budget process of opportunity, I guess. We have expiring debt, and we wanted to look, mesh that up with new debt that we know of projects we need to do. And coupled with historical low interest rates or good bond ratings, so we certainly have some advantages. And so we've identified kind of a plan. We've, our financial advisors, Hilltop, really have taken the numbers and kind of worked through that. And actually, it, the timing is perfect for us. It can really match up well with what we need to do. And we have Jim Sabonis, a longtime friend of the city, that he's been here many times, presenting information to various councils. And he will kind of go through more of the logistics and just the, more of the detail of what this would entail. But what he's going to present to you is basically, we talked about a couple of different options, but we, what he has now is we're kind of combining our two windows. We had the window for next year, then 2024. And given the uncertainty of the market, we thought, let's combine those into one issue right now. And then with certainty of knowing that that would be a good thing, we can easily structure the debt to match what we need to as far as the funding side and our tax rate management. So that's kind of what he's going to present with that, along with refunding opportunity of several, which is hard to believe when we, some of these are refunded bonds, that we thought, well, we're going to be done with that, and rates keep getting lower. So this will probably be the last one, but that's why I said last time. So anyway, Jim will go through that real quick and kind of give you a feel and certainly answer any questions you have. And then with everything good with that, we would proceed at the next meeting with notice of intent for a certificate obligation and address any other questions the council has at that point. But this is just for information purposes only.
Okay.
With that, I'll turn over to Jim.
Fair with us. Since this technical, I'd like to be able to show you some numbers, but let me do an overview and I'll do my introduction before we actually have the presentation. And let me start by saying, it's, I'm a pleasure to be here. My name, again, is Jim Sabonis. I'm a managing director at Hilltop Securities. I've been fortunate to be the financial advisor for a number of years. It's been amazing to see the growth of the city, and I will have to say, I'm pleased to be here. The city's never been in better financial shape. In 2018, you were upgraded by Standard &amp; Poor's to double, AAA, higher rated than the state of Texas, who's only AA+. You have to look down on them, but you are a very high-rated credit. And again, not only that, but to give you a feel and we'll give you some background, when we talk about where we are in interest rates, one, one.
One, one good index that we use to track bond index, bond interest rates is called the Geo Bond Buyer Index. And the last index for last week was at a 214. The all-time low has been 202. It was a one-week low and anomaly, and it's the low it was for the entire 30 years that I've worked in this industry. Interest rates have hovered at very low rates. And not only have they hovered at low rates, but investors have a tremendous demand for Texas municipal debt issuers. Our economy is booming around the rest of the country. There's challenges. People are deploying capital. They know our economy is growing. They know that our future is bright, and they know that structurally here in Texas, our legal process and how we issue debt is very strong. We have very stringent and focused ways to issue debt. All our debt is reviewed and approved by the Attorney General before it's approved to make sure it's valid. We don't have some of the challenges and shenanigans that you see around the country. So kind of set the tone, we've got a really good market. City's in excellent financial condition. Over the last few years, the city's deleveraged. It hasn't issued very much debt with your growth in value and the limited debt issues you have, you've got tremendous capacity. And so as we started this analysis, we started really by, over the last few years, we've been tracking some outstanding debt that the city has. As Ken indicated, there's a number of issues you have that all are going to be callable, or the majority of it will be callable, in February 15th of 2022. What it means is that that's the first opportunity we really have that we can refund them for savings. So we've been targeting those issues. Some of those issues have been refunded, some have been refunded multiple times. But with rates being low, there's tremendous economic savings that you have. So what you're going to see and present is a two-phase bond issuance. It's a single plane of finance. And Ken, is that going to be available, or should I just move forward? It's just one. Well, I'll, I'll go through this. Well, let me say, your capital funding goals that the city has is 15.2 million. It's split between 8.8 million for streets and drainage and 6.4 million of parks. When Ken and Paul called, they said, this is our multi-year capital improvement program. What can we do based on our current values and where we are? And in summary, because of the limited amount of debt you have, because of low interest rate, because of the attractive structure you have, we're proposing that you move forward and fund the entire program. You'll be able to fund the entire program with no increase in your debt service tax Let's see. I'll, I'll refer to this one in a minute. The proposed debt issuance in Texas that we use is called certificate obligation. And in that credit pledge, we do a credit pledge of your debt service tax rate. You'll be able to amortize it over 20 years. And as you see here, this is a schedule that, one of our schedules that we have. On the third column from the left is your tax assessed value, which your current value is, and what your current multi-year financial plan shows is your growth statistics. We actually have in column D, your tax-supported general obligation debt. And in column E, we have refunding savings for the debt that's refunded that is allocated to your current debt service tax rate. It's only a small portion of refunding. The majority of the savings are for your self-supported sales tax and other issues. And then we have your project fund of 15.2 million that shows the full funding of your program, amortized only 20 years. And that amortization being wrapped around your existing debt to generate a new debt service that at your current 99% budgeted collection rate maintains an INS tax rate of less than your eight cents. So in summary, the city has the ability to fully fund the, the capital improvement program without increasing your tax rate and staying with 20 years. It's kind of unique. And, and in my entire career, over 30 years, probably for the first 27 years, I never did a 25 or 30-year debt issue, maybe one or two out of emergencies. In the, in the last year, with interest rates being really low and flat, we've done more 25- and 30-year transactions than, than we've actually done in 20, because people take advantage of the low interest rates or to fund projects. In fact, I was telling your management team that my partners are at a couple of sales, and one of our sales was a lower-rated credit that sold a 25-year issue. And they sold it at just over 2.1% as the interest rates, just to give you a feel how low interest rates are. But for you to be able to do it on 20 years is a pretty unique opportunity. That's actually the new money issuance. And we go to the other screen. The refunding is unique in that, that on the screen, I'm going to try to just do this easily, that you've got a number of series of issues that we've been watching. As you can see, there's four series of issues outstanding. Those four issues are at pretty low interest rates. They range from 2% to about 4%. They all become callable in 2015 and 2022. The IRS, a couple legislative sessions ago, the federal government said we couldn't do advanced refundings. So the way we currently can do taxes every funding is we have to wait to the call date. But the way that they define a current call is that, that we can actually sell our bonds, refunding bonds within 90 days of the current call date. Why it's important is that when you sell your bonds, not only take action to sell your bonds, but you sell, take action to notify the investor of your existing bonds that we're going to redeem those at the call date. And they have a period of time, 45 days or so, that you have to give notice. And so that's done simultaneously. Our plan on this is to move forward, do a general obligation refunding bond to refund all the issues. And as you can see, that our expectation is matching the existing amortization schedule, no extension of debt. We replace it with an interest rate of about 1.58%. And it generates, currently, we're indicating about $1.2 million of savings. And then what we do is, we look at each issue and say, what is it currently being budgeted for? Some are being budgeted but paid by INS ad form taxes, some are self-supported by sales tax, and determine where those savings are best utilized on the existing debt. On the INS tax-supported debt savings, the plan is actually to take the savings and put them into next year, and actually have buffer the impact of your new debt service. The water and sewer portion, you can see that the plan would be to take the savings in '23 and '24. You're already through your budget for '22, but what we do is we drop your debt service down those years. And then on your sales tax issue, the savings was estimated to be go, to use in year '23 and '24. And you can see, it helps drop the debt service from 860 down to the 500, mid 500 range. The plan for the, for the, the plan of finance is a two-phase plan. And why it's a two-phase plan is that, when we talked about it, the refunding is shorter amortization, it's a bigger block size, and again, while the market is advantageous to us now, at any time, it can change. And, and my experience over, in, over my career and in the last few months indicates when interest rates move, they can move up quickly. The notice of intent process revolves a notice of intent for the city being published 45 days after the notice taking place. It's the first time you can issue, so it's a, that process to issue, the new money issue takes a little bit longer time. So what our, our thought is, is that we have one plan of finance, we have two separate issues. You move forward with the general obligation refunding bonds as soon as possible. Our, our plan for that would be to, if you approve and direct the council, the staff to move forward, we'd actually do the bond sale on October 26th. We'd close it on November 18th, try to catch the market exactly where it is. It is a separate issue on the certificates. To go through the process on that transaction, we'd have to, at the next meeting, have the notice of intent resolution, do the publications, let the publication period expire, and then sell the bonds on December 14th to close them on December 30th. That December 30th was in the 90-day window for the IRS to do a current refunding. So the idea is to move forward both them with current interest rates as quickly as possible, and to complete them this year. You know, the thought process is, and I was saying, and I've said this from the day I first worked in my career to now, is that you never sell debt because interest rates are low. You don't do a project because interest rates are low, but you take advantage of interest rates when you can. And so my thought is, if the city decides to move forward, we have attractive interest rates, we have much more upside interest rate risk than downside to lock in the interest rates where they are now, is what our, our plan was to go forward. In summary, we would apply to Standard &amp; Poor's, we expect confirmation of the city's AAA rating. And in fact, just as a side note, that AAA rating is really outstanding. It's not just a AAA rating. I spent some time reviewing it before I came here, and it's kind of unique. I've worked with a lot of clients, and I have some AAA, other AAA issuers, but I can't think of any other client that has the highest, very strong criteria, indicating on every criteria the city is evaluated on. Management, economics, its liquidity, its budget flexibility. Your city, on everything that you can control, you're very strong. And based on the information we've been provided, you're stronger now than you were in 2018, so we'd expect confirmation. We would expect to send, sell these both as competitive sales. My career experience and really recent experiences, there are a number of bidders who are looking for high-quality Texas bonds. Not only they're looking for our good economy and our strong structural, but when bonds and when interest rates are rising, the fact that, that I learned early and I still see happen on an ongoing basis, investors look to move into high credit quality. And the reason being is when people own bonds, they know they're going to have interest rate risk if they're buying bonds at 2% or 1.58%. They don't want credit risk. And so where we see take places tremendous bidding for high credit quality bonds, and the recent sales we've had, we've actually seen an outlying bidders, people that really step up, and you have a chance to do that. In your case, these are plain vanilla transactions. We expect very, very competitive bidding processes for both of them, and we move forward. So in summary, we'd started, and we've been tracking the refundings and providing information and discussing with your staff for, on an ongoing basis for years now. We've been looking for the date to get to these. We're fortunate that there, that there's a convergence of very low interest rate and our call date coming up. Sometimes it's fortunate to be lucky versus planning perfectly. Secondly, the, the new money issue, when we discussed it, you have the ability to fully fund it at today's interest rates and with no tax rate increase. So that's our plan to move forward. If, if you decide to move forward, the rec, the next step would be, at the next council meeting, there'd be a notice of intent. The notice of intent would actually deal with only the new money issue, and that would instruct the city secretary to move forward and publish a notice that we're moving forward with the December bond sale. But that concludes my formal comments. I'll answer any questions or provide any additional information as requested.
I may have missed it. What will be your fees that you charge?
Our fee is, we have a contractual fee. I don't have it calculated, but we have an existing contract, and the contract is a declining percentage over time. I don't have it calculated, I'll provide it to Ken and Paul tomorrow morning.
Yeah, because the savings, the savings sounds outstanding, but of course, anytime you have a new issuance, there are going to be fees that we're, that are going to offset that savings.
Yeah, and I apologize, I don't have the number, but what I will say is, when we show you the fees, there's no out-of-pocket costs. All the costs are included.
Impacted.
They're netted out of the refunding, and they're included in the new money issue. Fees are traditional and commonplace. They're structured, regulatory-approved, and it's been in place for the city for a number of years, but I'll, I'll provide the actual number to you tomorrow.
And then is there any, any cost, not that we would do this, but for early defeasance? So if we want to prepay, is there a breakage fee or anything like that?
Well, that, in our refundings, we're not able to prepay. There's a predetermined call date, and investors that have bonds outstanding, these are publicly sold bonds, they'll be, you know, diversely held. We have a paying agent who handles our payments. We just go through the, the notice process. So there's not the ability to prepay these besides the call date itself.
Got you.
And the way is the current call on these projects.
Got you. So you got to understand, if we come into a windfall of cash, the savings are great, but we're locked down until the call date's happened.
Yeah, but we're locking in an interest rate that...
That's higher. Yes, I agree.
Though, though I, I will say, and it's an interesting point, and a unique side issue, this time of year, and we've talked a little bit to your staff about this, is that call protection is inverse to this level of interest rates. The lower interest rates are, the less the cost for call protection. And, and we briefly discussed, discussed this, we haven't finalized it, but I know that tonight, one of my partners there is sale, and we've done a couple of sales recently, where our clients are undertaking major capital improvement programs, but those clients anticipate that there will be potentially federal funding that those projects may be eligible for.
Right.
And so what we've done is, in our, our documentation and our bid specs, we've indicated we have a normal call feature that investors look at to get their, calculate their rate of return. Typical on a 20-year bond issue would be a 10-year current call, but we all included what we call an extraordinary call, where the government, if those, those municipalities receive federal funding, if they're eligible to pay those projects, they have the option, not the requirement, it's the option, just to call those, those bonds at par. So we've done a number of that to deal with that concept where, you know, there's numbers that, clients that want to go forward, and it's, the dilemma is, we'd like to do the project now, we may get funding, and interest rates are low now. Try this kind of a way to combine that, to give them the flexibility to meet their objectives. And that's something we've discussed here, where you might, if there's a potential option in the future, some of those projects would be fundable, that you could pay down your debt accordingly with a current call at accrued interest and par at the time you do it.
Two questions. One, could you give me the breakdown again of the, what, the 15.2, how it breaks out again? I've missed some of it.
And the level of detail that I have available to you is that the street and drainage improvements are 8,850,000. The park improvements would be 6,413,400 for a total of 15,263,400.
All right. And then this may, this may be a question you can answer, or maybe can, but, and maybe I've forgotten from a previous discussion, but we're talking about doing certificates of obligation instead of going to a vote, taking this to the public for a vote? I'm assuming this is because the environment we're in, we want to act on it so quickly?
Well, I, I'm, I think that, I can't say exactly, but I can say what, why I see, 90% of the bonds I issue are under certificate obligation. And the common themes that I see when cities decide to do things and choose how to vote, and let me step back and for, just to kind of be remedial, cities can vote general obligation bonds, general obligation bonds that pledge their INS tax. They can issue certificate of obligation, which are a combination ad form and revenue, that pledge their INS tax, have the same credit rating, and can fund the same items, but they're done through notice and eligible petition process for approval. And then there's a concept called a tax note, which we've actually done before, which is a short seven-year ability for a city to fund projects. What, what I usually see is, from observation and listening to my clients, is that, you know, there's a separation between strategic and initiatives and ongoing projects. And what I think that this issue, what I see, the themes are, these are ongoing required projects that do not increase your ad form INS tax rate. We don't have to vote on increase in our debt tax rate. And third, to do it quickly, because the interest rates are where they are in that place. So, and also taking consideration that, you know, the current legislative statute indicates if you were to vote and fail, you can't fund debt for something for three years as a city till afterwards. So I have clients, and we've had some elections recently, but usually those elections would be for strategic initiatives that, sports stadiums, increase in ad form taxes of significance, you know, or unique projects that, that, that are not essential to the community. I, I think that the petition process, what I see from my experience with councils, is that this is normal course of business, funding these projects as you go forward. So that, that would be our thought here.
Thank you.
This way, Ken, you have a question? Barbara? Okay. Mike?
No.
Do you have any, do you have any more? Okay. So I think that's all the questions. Thank you so much for coming out tonight and presentation.
I think you wouldn't have to take you to a vote, just because there's not an extension of debt. I just wanted to have all the records.
I think that's, that's, that's it, guys. On that, we're going to go to the next item, clarification of consent or action items on today's city council meeting. Does anybody have any questions about any of the items on...
Nope.
Nope?
Nope.
Okay. Well, wow, that's perfect timing, because we can start with our interview process. So with that, we are going to adjourn the early work session at 5:30. So with that, we are going to adjourn the early work session at 5:30.